Clerk, please call the roll.
Hilberg.
Here.
Colossar.
Here.
Lamb.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Oh, Coin.
Here.
Sorry.
Thanks.
Lost my spot.
Reading of the minutes?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
I move to have the minutes as prepared by the clerk for the April 8, 2013 regular meeting be approved as submitted.
Second. Any discussion on the minutes? Clerk, please call the roll on the minutes.
Colossar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Motion passed as 7-0.
Reports of standing committees, the Finance Committee made prior to finance, and we'll have our next meeting two weeks from today. Health, Safety, and Sanitation Committee, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meetings scheduled and nothing to report at this time.
Thank you, Public Properties Committee, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled and no report this evening.
Thank you, Special Legislation Committee, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meetings held and nothing to report. I have a few public forums that I've got dates for, though, that I'll talk about at the end of the meeting.
Thank you, Speech and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled.
Thank you, Water and Utilities Committee, Mr. Colossar.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a Water and Utilities meeting scheduled for Tuesday, April 30th at 5:30 downstairs in the multipurpose room, and we're going to discuss recommendations from Utility Rate Review and a couple other discussion points. Thank you.
Thank you. Request for council action. We have several items for the Finance Committee. We have 1384 expenditure for Moody's Credit Analysis, 1385 budget amendments, 1386 increase the PO for Rain Associates, 1387, 244 Medina Street forfeiture of property, 1388 purchase agreement and option to purchase for the Moose property at 140 West Liberty, and 1389 amendment to kind of fight ordinance, section 13301, association memberships. Reports of municipal officers. Mayor Hanwell?
Thank you, Mr. President. The, on the city website, there's a link for the Everbridge Alert System. Any of the residents interested in being alerted for whether it's weather-related, hazardous materials, amber alerts, you can select which alerts you're interested in, and there's a link right off the front page of the city website. The Medina Community Band is having their spring concert on Sunday, April 28th at 2:00 PM at the Performing Arts Center, which is 851 Waymouth Road. On May 4th, some of the local churches and pastors are going to host another day of serving called Love Medina. They're going to organize at the city garage and then go out to the different locations throughout the community. It's too late to turn in requests now because they had to draw the line somewhere to get the various supplies and the jobs assigned. We have two different methods of paying in addition to coming in or mailing your utility bill in. One is ACH, which stands for Automatic Automated Clearinghouse, and customers can sign up for the automated payment from their bank account to avoid late fees and mail charges, and it's only withdrawn at the time that it's due. Application forms for that are available at the finance window here at City Hall. And then we also offer online bill paying where customers can pay by a credit card, and that signup is also on the front page of the city website. And then last but not least, Thursday, May 2nd is the celebration of the National Day of Prayer events in the city of Medina. There'll be a prayer, Mayor's Prayer Breakfast at Williams on the Lake. That's the only event that there's a charge for. It's $15 to pay for the breakfast. It's from 7:00 AM to 8:30, and the guest speaker is Reverend Cornell Carter from Second Baptist Church. On noon, there's a prayer service on the square unless the weather is inclement, and in that case, at the northeast corner of the square, United Church of Christ will open up and host that inside. And the evening service is at the new Medina United Methodist Church on Foot Road, and that's the same hours as the morning except PM, 7:00 PM to 8:30 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durham, Director of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of things. As you know, we do our budgets in three installments. We've worked through the first one, and part of those are through council. The rest are coming up. The second group, I passed out the budget preparation packets to department heads on Friday, and those will be coming back to me and then to council here in another month. Additionally, there was significant discussion at the Finance Committee meeting earlier on the potential bond issue to replace the Build America bonds because the feds are not reimbursing all of them based on the sequester, and we'll be working forward on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huber, Law Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to say on behalf of myself and all of the prosecutors, I'm going to miss Bob Starcher. He's retiring. Been here as law director and as assistant for 12 years, and Bob's brought to the table great level of police work, great person to work with, wonderful sense of humor. On behalf of myself and all of the prosecutors, we're going to miss Bob and wish him well.
Thank you. Lieutenant Burke Beckler for the Police Department?
Thank you, Mr. President. No report at this time.
Thank you. Ms. Rice, the Economic Development Director? I mean, yeah, that's right. I thought maybe you'd change your title.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple items this evening. First, we have a couple upcoming meetings. The next Medina Area Transportation Task Force meeting is scheduled for this Friday, April 26th at 2:00 PM in the multipurpose room. And the next Medina City Development Corporation Board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, May 1st at 6:00 PM in the multipurpose room. I'll be working on the agendas for both of those this week. The county commissioners unanimously approved both Montville Township CRA resolutions this morning. The public notice will be in the paper this week and next week, and once the public notice requirement is completed, then the next step is to send the application to the state. I would like to thank Bethany Dentler for all her hard work on this legislation, and for those of you out there that aren't sure what the CRA stands for, it's Community Reinvestment Areas, Property Tax Abatement for our JED district, and basically anyone that's looking for that property tax abatement will have to join the JED in order to get it. So we feel this is, will be a great tool for developing the Route 3 corridor and the Route 18 corridor in the future if we can get that through the state. And then we are also working with a company right now that is looking to break ground in that area this summer and is interested in joining, so we're hoping this will all come together. So stay tuned for that. We are also in the process of planning a ribbon cutting and grand opening for Second Soul that will be moving to 122 Public Square. That is scheduled for Thursday, May 16th at 11:00 AM. We will have more details in the following week. And then also on Friday, May 17th, the businesses of Medina Square will showcase the latest fashion, hair, accessory styles during the first ever Rock the Runway benefit. The event will be held in the Medina Community Theater at 139 West Liberty Street, which is the Masonic Temple, and is sponsored by the IDEA Jewelry Business. The doors will open at 6:30 PM, and the fashion show kicks off at 7:45. The tickets cost $15 a person in advance and $17 at the door. It includes one glass of wine and very heavy hors d'oeuvres. The event is limited to the first 200 people who order tickets, and the tickets can be purchased online at www-mainstreetmedina.com or by calling 330-952-0910. So this is basically a new Main Street Medina fundraising event and something new that they're doing, so we're pretty excited about it. And that's my report.
Thank you. Chief Painter, Fire Chief?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Insurance Services Office, or ISO, evaluates local fire departments and the insurance rate for our communities based on their findings. It's been 12 years since our department was the last evaluated. We're currently going through an updated evaluation as we speak. Department members have been preparing their documentation for the last two months, and on May 1st and May 2nd, ISO will have reps in town doing the onsite portion of our evaluation. Three primary areas they evaluate are dispatching, our water distribution system, the fire department abilities. With the improvements in all three areas over the last 10 years, we're pretty confident we can get our number lowered, 1 through 10. 10 is no fire protection at all. We're at 5 right now, so preliminary talks, they're pretty sure we might get down to 4, which would be insurance reduction for all residents. It may take several months before we get the final report, but I'll update you as soon as it comes in. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wright, Recreation Center Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do not have a report, but I would also like to echo Mr. Huber's congratulations to Lieutenant Starcher on his retirement. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vogel, Building Official?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to take this opportunity to thank one of our new property owners, a Mr. Gary Hughes. Mr. Hughes purchased the 36-unit apartment building at 230 West North Street last year from the previous owner, who had left the building fall into serious disrepair. The roof had so many holes and was leaking so badly that sections of it had collapsed into the units below. Water damage extended all the way to the first floor of this three-story building. Many of the tenants had left because of the neglect, and the building was beginning to attract a less desirable sort that, for some reason, were not motivated to call the authorities regarding the building problems. We were finally made aware of the situation by the Police Department. They were making a lot of trips there because of criminal activity and thought we should know about the building issues as well. I began to contact the owner regarding the damage but could not get any results from him. Our case ended up in court, and near the end of this process, Mr. Hughes stepped in and purchased the building, promising us he would correct all the violations. I can report tonight that Mr. Hughes has made good on his promise. The roof has been completely replaced, all units with damage have been repaired, and the structure has even been reinforced. All of the units are receiving a makeover, and the exterior and common areas have been refurbished. New tenants are arriving daily, and the atmosphere of the building has become safer and more law-abiding. So again, thank you, Mr. Hughes. You've not only improved the building, but you have contributed to the safety and comfort of one of our neighborhoods. Welcome to Medina. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Swanson, Parks and Recreation Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to wish council and all the members Happy Earth Day. But also, this past weekend, Friday, or Saturday and Sunday, the Medina Lacrosse Association hosted the Bagatoway Invitational Tournament. It's consisting of over 100 teams of boys and girls, really the Midwest region. A lot of people come to Medina, and they were here this past weekend, and I hope they enjoy their visit despite the cooler temperatures. This Saturday, with Earth Day and Arbor Day, we're going to be celebrating, a little celebration up on the square. We're going to be planting a tree. It's a tri-colored beach at noon on this Friday, April 26th. And then last, would like to also give my best regards to Lieutenant Bob Starcher, who I've known for, man, 17 years, and 17 good years, and it's been a pleasure working alongside you and with you, and I appreciate your sense of humor and your judgment. But, you know, we look forward to you and your wife enjoying, and best wishes for you.
Thank you. Mr. Patton, City Engineer?
Thank you. As we've been talking about recently, our West Smith Road project is about to get started. Contract has been signed. Meeting with the contractor this week to get a formal schedule, but we anticipate sometime in the middle of May for them to mobilize to the site. Detours will be set up. Wanted to make sure that all the stakeholders in the area, which is businesses and property owners on West Smith and the adjacent areas, we will be extending an invitation to a public open house here this week. Invitations will go out this week. The open house will be at a later date where you can come and ask any questions about the project. And I, too, want to join everybody, wishing Bob the very best. It's been a pleasure working with him. He definitely will be missed.
Thank you. Mr. Pecoli, Service Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. Lieutenant Starcher, where do I start? Actually, Bob, known Lieutenant for a long time. It's been a pleasure working with you for the last 12 years. Sense of humor, always willing to assist Service Department with PD, and you'll be missed, definitely. Good luck to you.
Thank you. Noticees, communications, and petitions? There are none, unfinished business? None? Introduction of visitors. Members of the public will be permitted the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during the portion of council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed to the chair, and a reasonable time limit of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there is a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the front right microphone and state their name and address so it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council this evening? Yes. State your name.
My name is Alex Monansky, and this behind me is Eric Rabbinchuck. We're here to present a student-led activity group named Medina Chance. We are hoping to bring activities to Medina that make an impact on Medina's teens and the city of Medina itself. Our first activity that we have established is a talent show on the square. Anyone of all ages are welcome to try out. They just need to fill out an application, which will be, which can be found at Woodsey's or at the high school. Woodsey's is helping us with the sound system for the talent show. Tryouts will, will be held at Medina High School Middle Auditorium, May 9th and 10th. We would like to also have a special thanks to Mayor Hanwell, Councilman Lamb, and Councilman Hilberg for being a part of our committee and making it happen. I would like to hand it over to Eric now.
Hi. So as Alex said, we're trying to do this talent show on the square in June, and we've been working very hard these, this past month to accomplish this, and especially one of the things that we've been doing is working with Student Council. We've partnered with Student Council through Medina High School, and the Student Council will be providing concessions at all of our events that we'll be holding on the square. The money that they will make from the concessions will go and be put aside towards the program, the Student Council program at the high school. So we hope to make a positive impact on the schools by having Student Council involved with our program, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council? Mr. Doyle?
Good evening. I'm Tom Doyle, 326 East Smith. I have a Little Whiz Fire Museum in Medina. I want to start with one thing. My name and the Little Whiz Fire Museum came up in a newspaper article recently, went along with a sum of money, and it's a little confusing. People have been asking me if that money was going to me and to the museum. I just want to make sure that everybody is fully aware it had absolutely nothing to do with me. It was going to the Archives Commission, so I just want that to be clear. Not everybody's probably aware, but the Archives Commission was set up probably 15 years or more ago, and their only job was really to create the Firehouse Museum on the square. Unfortunately, that hasn't happened. There have been promises after promises after promises after promises, starting back in about 1999. That's a little frustrating to me, having the Fire Museum in town, because I do get people asking me continuously what's going on with it. So I had sent an open email to council, offering my services if we could come to some sort of an agreement. As of yet, we haven't reached that, but I laid out a number of different steps and things that I was willing to do and stuff like that. And then I offered the council and also the Archives Commission. I said, "Come down and see what I've got. I have a fabulous collection, a lot of things that would be very, very appropriate because they're Medina things that would be nice to have in that Firehouse Museum uptown." Unfortunately, I can't work under the confines of the Archives Commission. I really would like you all to consider it. You know what my standing offer is, and it's, I don't think it's unreasonable. I think it's just that we need to make this happen. And we're five years away from the bicentennial 200-year celebration of the city of Medina. That building alone should be the keystone for that whole celebration, and it's not going to happen overnight. But I know I can make it happen in a whole lot less than 15 years. You know, it would take three readings of council in order to have the Archives Commission set aside, and I can guarantee you that in that six weeks, I could fill that place up, and it could be open. And I am offering my services. I'm doing it out of the goodness of my heart. I'm not asking for funding. I want to see it be open, and I would hope that everyone would agree with me. I think everyone that did show up was extremely amazed at the amount of equipment that I have. And I'm, I've got tons of room that I am suffering with, and it would be nice to expand a little bit. But I also would offer, you know, to have it open before Friday night band concerts for every event that's on the square, be it art in a park, be it candlelight walk, whatever. All those events draw people to the square, and that's what this whole thing is about. It's about making the people on the square understand the history and to give them just an occasional thing. You know, not everybody's going to be interested in fire equipment, but what I had suggested in my email was the second floor, which traditionally had always been the Police Department, Service Department, Council, and Mayor's Office. That whole second floor should be set up with historic stuff for them, too. I mean, I have been dying at this very first traffic light. Oh, my God, wouldn't that be great, hanging upstairs in honor of the Service Department? I have so much fire stuff. I've got the 1916 Hallack fire truck that was manufactured right here in town. It belongs up there. I have Chuck Davis brought me a whole box of stuff that was leftover from the Fire Department when he served as chief. I mean, we could make such fantastic displays, and also included in that, I suggested that, you know, museums have a tendency to have specific pieces that are the prime pieces, and they somewhat become a little bit stale just because they are the prime pieces and they don't move around. But we should also have revolving displays, too, that maybe for Memorial Day, have some military displays, you know, honoring the veterans, maybe on different times. Have displays for something like the Rook Company, the largest employer in Medina at the time, and everything like that. And by rotating those things around, I think we would end up with a really creative thing, and people would stop back, you know? And they don't have to spend hours and hours there, but if they came in for 15, 20 minutes, on their way to the bathroom even, you know, while they're at an event on the square, just give them something to look at and get the kids a little bit curious about the history of Medina. Anyway, I've made my offer. I hope you guys will consider it, and I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Your enthusiasm is refreshing and welcome, and I think on behalf of council, I can say I don't know if we really want to abolish the Archive Commission, but I think we'd rather enter into a collaborative effort with you to make the Firehouse Museum the best museum, of course, in the county, maybe in northeast Ohio. So we will definitely be in discussion with you, with your materials that you have, and hopefully we can able to show them off to the rest of the community. All right. Thank you for your time.
Is there anybody else that wishes to address council? Hearing them, we've got Introduction of Considerations of Ordinances and Resolutions. The first resolution is with Lieutenant Starcher, so I'm going to come down on the floor. Operate this thing. Counsel has a, you have to watch me, right? Counsel has a resolution. It's Resolution Number 70-13. It's a resolution commending Robert Starcher for his years of dedicated service to the city of Medina, law enforcement, and the community. I'm going to read this to everyone. Whereas Robert Starcher has faithfully and conscientiously served the city of Medina as a patrol officer from October of 1983 until May of 1991, Sergeant from May of 1991 until February of 1997, Lieutenant, and Lieutenant from 1997 until 2009, Acting Chief from June 2009 until August 2009, and Lieutenant again from August 2009 until April 2013. And whereas Robert Starcher has provided exemplary leadership and guidance in both his public and private life, and has always put the greater good of the community ahead of his personal consideration, and whereas throughout his years of service, Robert Starcher has demonstrated the highest example of character, ethics, morals, and unselfish service to the city and the community. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city of council, by council of the city of Medina, Ohio, Section 1, that Medina City Council wishes to express its deepest gratitude and appreciation to Robert Starcher for his countless contributions and exemplary service to the city law enforcement and the community. Section 2, that the city, the Medina City Council wishes Robert Starcher good health, success, and prosperity in his retirement and all future endeavors. Section 3, that this resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest period allowed by law. Congratulations. I guess, I guess before this, I guess before this becomes official, we have to vote on it, so I'll enter a motion.
Mr. Coin, it is my great pleasure to make the motion to pass this resolution in honor of Mr. Starcher's, Lieutenant Starcher's retirement.
Is there a second?
I will give the second to Mr. Starcher.
Thank you. Is any further discussion or comment?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
I do want to take a moment to say I just think Lieutenant Starcher is one of the true good guys, and we're very lucky to have him in Medina and with Medina Police Department. I will miss you, Bob. I'm glad for you. I'm happy that you're going to be able to retire, but just truly such a good guy and a good asset for the city, and I will miss working out with you, which, by the way, Bob usually started working out before me and was still working out when I finished, though. I just saw him this weekend. He was still down there working out, even though he's got his retirement, so. But Bob, thank you for all your service to the city.
Mr. President?
Mr. Simpson?
Bob. I've had the privilege to work almost 30 years at various times during your career. I've worked with you as, when you were a patrol officer, as sergeant, as lieutenant, as acting chief, and as lieutenant again. And I can tell you, when several other people have mentioned that Bob has, they've enjoyed his sense of humor, there's nobody around that has, and I call it because I have the same type of sense of humor, it's sick. And not a lot of people appreciate it, but I, obviously, some people here do, but now, Bob, I've, throughout working with you in the capacity that I've been able to work with you, the accolades that you've received, you truly deserve. Your compassion, I mean, everybody thinks of police officers, and I've said this before, is, you know, the guys and women that are out there, you know, taking care of the people that do bad things, which you do, and you did, but you did it with compassion. I mean, I remember the time that you didn't have tasers and pepper spray, that you relied on your batons, and we were all younger then, but I'd see altercations where you were attempting to arrest somebody, and after that altercation took place, I was always impressed. You always treated that individual with respect and dignity. Even though they made a mistake, you always said, you know, "People make mistakes. Hopefully, they'll change and learn from this." I think you can tell by the people that's gathered here for you that the leadership that you provided in your capacity as Lieutenant and Sergeant and Acting Chief, that they respect you, and I know you're going to be missed, truly missed. Again, 30 years is a long, long time, but I know you're going to look at it, hopefully, in the next few months, and look at it as a journey that took place, and there was a lot of good times. I mean, I'm sure in your department, you witnessed a lot of births of fellow officers with their children and birth of your own child, all the good times with Chris, and I know we have walked a few of them to their graves. So I just want you to know that I have the utmost respect for you. I know you're going to succeed in whatever adventure you have next, which I'm sure you'll have another adventure. I, as a council member, I'm proud to have known you and worked with you over these years. I hope at some point in time that we can regain those summer vacations to Vermillion. I'm not getting too mushy here, but Bob and his wife and myself and my wife and a few other couples, we made it a yearly routine that we'd stay a couple weekends up in Vermillion and then interfere with the lifestyle at Putten Bay, which we were pretty good at, but I hope we can get, maybe sometime get those back together, but enjoy your retirement, relax, and enjoy whatever endeavor you're going to have next. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Mr. Lamb?
Well, Councilman Simpson, I think also, I think like you, Councilman Simpson epitomizes all the great qualities that you want to have in a city councilman. And Bob, you clearly, you know, you epitomize all the qualities that residents hope that they have in a police officer. And I just want to add that the early 1980s must have been a great, a great time, a great crop for prospective police officers, because I remember, I remember another guy named Undercoffer, who I think came on board around then, and then I also remember another fellow named Hanwell that I think came on around And then I also remember another fellow named Hanwell, that I think came on around the same time. And I just want to say that I wish you well. I don't have that extensive life of experience like Councilman Simpson, but the time I did have with you, the work I saw you do, you were a great guy. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rose.
Mr. President, Lieutenant Starcher, it's not, I don't have nearly the experience that anybody around me does with you, but those few times that we've had, had the pleasure of meeting each other, whether you're in your street clothes or in your uniform, it's always been a pleasure, very professional. I felt very comfortable, very safe. You are definitely an asset to the community, and you surely will be missed. Thank you for all your service. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hilbert.
Bob, I was just, as these people were talking, I was thinking back to when I actually met you, and it's been a lot longer than I thought. It was back in '92, 21 years ago, when I moved back from Tennessee when I got out of the military. You're truly going to be missed. I'm sure you're not going to have to worry about getting mad at me anymore for chasing the scanner, though. Those years are gone. Thanks for your time.
Mr. Colzar.
Lieutenant Starcher, I don't have the track record like some of these old timers up here, but I do, that was a joke. I appreciate your honesty, your integrity, your compassion for this community, and putting 30 years of your life on the line to keep us safe, and that means a lot. We've had great discussions in the past, and I know you'll be involved with our community because I know the love you have for it. So thank you very much for your service to our community, and on behalf of the residents of Ward 3, I thank you as well.
Okay, Lieutenant Starcher, now you're back to me. I just had a few things, I think Mr. Pacoli gave me a few things to say. No, I'm just kidding, I'm not going to say this. I really can't say that on TV, so. I just want to congratulate you for all your years of service for the city and on behalf of the residents, give you this, a resolution, and commend you on your service and hope the best for you and your family in the future. Thank you. The mayor just reminded me that we didn't call roll, so it's really not official yet, so. Mr. Patton, if you could call the roll.
Lamb. Lamb.
Yes.
Okay. Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colzar.
Yes.
Resolution 70-13 passes 7-0.
Congratulations. I don't know if you want to say anything. I don't want to put you on the spot, but maybe I will.
You already did.
But I'm not sure. I'll let the mayor go.
I've worked with Lieutenant Starcher for the entire time he's been with the department, the 30 years. You can tell he's weathered it a little bit better than I have, but he's done a great job for the department. He's a man of high ethics and morals and family values and Christian principles and just what we want in a leader in the police department. And, you know, when somebody leaves, a lot of times, the saying is, you know, they can't be replaced. Well, this is a perfect example, because council voted to abolish his position, because he can't be replaced. And, right. So I do have an epistle from the chief of police, but rather than read the whole thing, I'm going to read the last paragraph in the closing and then a proclamation. From the chief's letter, 29 years ago, you gave your life to the City of Medina, and today, a grateful community returns it to you with fondest wishes for your future and a deep appreciation for the sacrifices you have made to faithfully serve its citizens. May God bless you and Chris in your retirement. It has been an honor to serve with you. All my best regards, Chief Patrick Baraducci. Then I have a mayoral proclamation, City of Medina proclamation, whereas Lieutenant Robert Starcher will be retiring from the Medina Police Department on April 30, 2013. And whereas throughout his almost 30 years of service, Lieutenant Starcher has won the highest regard of all his associates and the admiration of citizens throughout our community. Whereas Lieutenant Starcher has held every rank in the police department, including Acting Chief, on several occasions, including this evening. Whereas his service in both public and private life has been given willingly and cheerfully, and he has contributed immeasurably to the success of community endeavors and to the betterment of the quality of life for many of his fellow citizens. Now therefore, I, Dennis Hanwell, Mayor of the City of Medina, do hereby recognize Lieutenant Bob Starcher for his many contributions and exemplary service to our community, and extend our best wishes for many more happy and productive years in the future. Witness whereof, I have set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Medina to be affixed here, too, and I present this to you. Congratulations. Thank you. First of all, I'd just like to thank God for his mercy and grace. Without that, I would not be here today. There's not a doubt in my mind, his spirit is the reason for this, for these 30 years of service. I'd like to thank Chris for her support during all the good times, all the bad times. You've always been there for me, and I love you very much. I'd like to thank all the officers who are here tonight, the ones I've worked with, all of them in the past. They've just taught me things. They've taught me everything, how to be a police officer, how to serve the citizens of Medina, and it's just been an honor and a privilege working with each and every one of them. I'd like to thank council for this, and the mayor, and the chief. Really wasn't necessary. Everyone on the department serves because they want to serve the people and be a servant. So on behalf of Chris and myself, thank you very much.
Also, I'd like to mention at the end of the meeting, we have refreshments in your honor. That's going to be great, cookies and punch, maybe coffee, I'm not sure. Okay, thank you again. Moving on. Ordinance 71-13, an ordinance authorizing the final resolution and execution of all documentation between Ohio Department of Transportation and the City of Medina for the State Route 18 and 57 resurfacing project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
Emergency clause been requested, I moved to add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Further discussion, Mr. Patton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the final piece of legislation for the agreement between the city and ODOT for the resurfacing of routes 18 and 57 through the city. The city does have a share of this cost. We're asking for the emergency clause because ODOT requires, in order to meet their deadlines to have the check in the agreement to them, I believe it's by May 1st.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? The clerk, please call the roll on emergency clause.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colzar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Ordinance 71-13 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 72-13, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding between the City of Medina and the Wheeling Lake Area Railway Company relative to the reconstruction of state road railway dual crossing.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
Emergency clause been requested, I moved to add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Mr. Patton.
Thank you. This is, as it reads, it's for the reconstruction of the rail crossing on State Road between Smith and West Liberty. We're asking for an emergency clause because we'd like to try and get this completed before we start the West Smith project. This section of State Road will be in the detour for that project, but we can't do those two simultaneously.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll on emergency clause.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colzar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Ordinance 72-13, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with
the Board of Education of the Medina City School District for information technology services.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
Because I'm employed by the Board of Education, I'll be abstaining on tonight's ordinance here.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an agreement between Medina City Schools and the City of Medina. The city provides two full-time school resource officers to the school system without charge, and the school provides to the city a information technology technician who helps with our computer needs and replacing some of the different items as necessary. The contract, we used to have a contract that included both a school resource officer and IT, and thought it best to separate the two, so we'll have one, this one's just for the IT, and we'll have a separate one in the near future for the school resource officers. It's really just documenting what has been taking place. The agreement is for a period of three years, but may be terminated by either party within 60 days' notice. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion in the ordinance? Clerk, please call the roll on the ordinance.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colzar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Abstain.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Ordinance 73-13 passes 6-8, one abstention.
Resolution 74-13, a resolution authorizing participation in Ohio Department of Transportation's Cooperative Purchasing Program for the purchase of sodium chloride rock salt.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
Emergency clause been requested, I moved to add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Mr. Pacoli.
Thank you, Mr. President. The request for the emergency clause is in order to participate in this program for the winter of '13 and '14. This request, contract request, must be returned to the state by May 1st.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll on the emergency clause.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colzar.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Any further discussion on the resolution? Clerk, please call the roll on the resolution.
Colzar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colzar.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Any further discussion on the resolution? Clerk, please call the roll on the resolution.
Colzar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Resolution 74-13 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 75-13, an ordinance amending Section 3102E of the salaries and benefits code of the City of Medina, Ohio, relative to Medina Community Recreation Center 2013 part-time pay scale.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
Emergency clause been requested, I moved to add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Mr. Wright.
Thank you, Mr. President. The REC Center is requesting approval to add the group exercise instructor to job code RC-33. By adding the group and exercise instructor to job code RC-33, we'll be able to start new and less experienced instructors at a lower rate of pay. The reason for the emergency clause is we have several new instructors we'd like to bring in at this new rate. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll on the emergency clause.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colzar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Any further discussion on the ordinance? Clerk, please call the roll on the ordinance.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colzar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Ordinance 75-13 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 76-13, an ordinance amending ordinance number 2013-12, passed December 10, 2012, amendments to the 2013 budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. First line on here is Moody's Credit is to pay for the credit analysis for the bond issue we spoke of earlier. Second one is for the property purchase, which is going to be added to the agenda, but we're covering the appropriation within this ordinance. The third is for some purchase orders, there were prior year purchase orders that were closed, and so we have to reappropriate that money in order to be able to use it. And the final one is for the reimbursements for salt.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance?
Mr. President.
Mr. Lamb.
Can you clarify this for me? So the $200,000 for the purchase of the Moose property is included in this ordinance? Am I correct on that?
Yes, 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 Mr. Lamb.
It's $220,000, the appropriation is included in this ordinance. Okay.
Any further comments or discussion? Clerk, please call the roll on the ordinance.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colzar.
Yes.
Lamb.
No.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Ordinance 76-13 passes 6-8, one nay.
I will entertain a motion to add ordinance number 77-13, 78-13, and 79-13 to the agenda.
Make a motion to add the three ordinances to tonight's agenda.
Second.
Any discussion on adding the three ordinances? Will the clerk please call the roll on addition of the three ordinances?
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colzar.
Yes.
Lamb.
No.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Motion passes 6-8, one nay.
Ordinance 77-13, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a purchase agreement with the Medina Moose Lodge Number 647, Loyal Order of the Moose, for the purchase of property located at 140 West Liberty Street.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The emergency clause been requested, I moved to add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Lamb.
My comments that I made at the finance committee meeting, I'll distill down to make them brief. My opposition to this is collegial, no disrespect for my colleagues. I think that they have one opinion on this, I have a different opinion. My experience with the Uptown Historic District, the nine blocks, has been long, involved over many years, and the importance of the property in the Historic District is finite. It is not limitless, and I don't think that this parcel of property is the best place It is not limitless, and I don't think that this parcel of property is the best place for us to consider for parking. It's in the central block of the Historic District, one of the most active blocks on the east side, one of the most inactive on the west side. And my opinion is that that property needs to be used for retail purposes, money generating purposes, not as parking. One of my concerns is evident, I think, to anybody that looks around any communities, once you take a piece of property and you pave it over and make it parking, it will forever remain parking. It is not going to come back and suddenly become a retail business or a popular restaurant. My other opposition to it includes that there is no opportunity with the emergency clause, because this has all been discussed in executive session, there's been no opportunity to gather public input so that we can get the views of the public on what I think is a really important issue when we are talking about tying up a piece of property in the Historic District for, simply for parking, when I believe there could be a better area for this project. Lastly, I don't think that it's a good idea to go forward on a project when we have no idea yet how many parking places exist in the nine-block area. I think that if we were going to move forward on a project of this significance, we would want to first know how much parking exists, how much private parking there is, is there a more creative way to use private-public parking so that we can meet the same goal? And I think that we would also want to have a plan for the Historic District, which is simply nine blocks, not take a corner, not take a corner, when we don't really have a plan. So, I have great respect for all of my colleagues, but I do disagree.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb. If I may add, I'll take a contrarian view that you have, I think that we've discussed a lot of the issues with respect to the Uptown area and the future of the Uptown area, and we've taken dramatic steps over the few years, the past few years, regarding making the Uptown more attractive as far as drawing in more people to come to different events. Main Street Medina has done an excellent job in which to bring people to the Uptown, and whether or not be a perceived or real parking issue, I believe there is one that does exist on the square. We've had several businesses that wanted to locate or surrounding the areas, whether it be the restaurants located on the west side of the square, or businesses located, wanting to locate on the west side of the square, the issue has been parking. And also, with respect to this parking, we have looked at this long and hard, I think it's been over several months, maybe six months or longer, though you are correct, some of it has been in executive session, but I believe the press has reported on this once before, that we are looking at parking on the west side of the square, not only to serve the events that are going to occur in the square and the businesses and patrons that want to go onto the west side of the square, businesses for restaurant purposes or otherwise, but also for the Muni Court. We've decided that the Muni Court is in need of additional space, and the best place to have that space increases its current location. In order to do that, we may be disrupting current parking spaces at the Muni Court, which will need to be replaced by other parking spaces, of which we thought that this would be a great location. And in going forward with a project and purchasing property for parking, we, council, members of council, if I may speak for some of them or all of them, maybe not you directly, Mr. Lamb, is that we want to be able to accomplish many different projects with one. In this case, we were purchasing a parcel of land for parking that will not only hopefully solve the parking for the events on the square, but also help solve a parking problem for the court when we take parking spaces away. So this is a multi-faceted acquisition, and not just to solve one goal. I do understand your concern about taking additional space away from the nine-block area, specifically the immediate blocks, and not having additional restaurants or retail available there, but I guess I have to look at a bigger picture also, that maybe those restaurants, existing restaurants and existing retail, and maybe new retail, will need new parking, and we have to put it somewhere. I understand your plan to maybe put it a little farther away, but I think maybe a little closer, maybe more conducive for the residents to make it more convenient, and I think in viewing this project, convenience is a factor that you have to look at. So I guess, you know, we're a little different in our views, and I can appreciate your point of view, but I'm going to stick with, I guess, what I believe to be the future of Medina, is to look at those other issues, and overall, the acquisition of this parcel solves more problems in my mind than it creates, but I appreciate your, and respect your opposite view than I have. And I don't know if anybody else has any more comments?
Mr. President, I do want to clarify one thing. We are not tearing down any buildings in this legislation. We are purchasing an existing parking lot.
Thank you. And I'd also like to thank Mr. Huber for negotiating this purchase agreement, and the next one is the option agreement. It, you know, it's a lot of work negotiating with brokers and negotiating with sellers of property. There's a lot of back and forth, and I know that he's probably happy to see this come to fruition and be on the council agenda. I don't know if you have anything else to add, Mr. Huber?
I think Kim Rice has got me working on a few others, so we...
I'm glad she's keeping you busy. We don't want to let you sit stale. Is there any other comments with respect to the emergency clause or the ordinance regarding the purchase agreement?
I have a further comment.
Yes, Mr. Lamb.
I think it's important to clarify that where Councilman Rose was saying, you know, this doesn't include us taking a building down. However, the expectation is that if we convert this piece of ground-level parking to a parking deck, that will include taking a building down. And it is clear that the thing that made the community what it is, the thing we take pictures of and the reason people come here, they don't come here because we tore the Baptist Church down and build a parking lot, they don't come here because we built a parking lot on South Court Street, they come here because of the restoration of the downtown. That is the reason that we have people come to these events. In the last forty years, we have torn down forty buildings in the nine-block area. And so if, in fact, we follow through on the plan as projected, we would, in fact, take a building down. And I think that to look at this as a long-term, what is most important to the city, and what is most important is that we do everything we can do to enhance that retail, restaurant business that has propelled this city to where we are, and parking secondary at best, but very accurately located so it doesn't take away any possible retail property from this finite area of nine blocks in Historic District.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments? Mr. Simpson?
I respect Mr. Lamb greatly, but I agree with your comments, Mr. Coin. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Coin, I understand where Bill's coming from, and, you know, I have similar concerns about the Uptown area and the loss of buildings and things of that nature, but, you know, in discussion as in finance, we are purchasing the property. Yes, it is currently a parking lot. We've already discussed that, looking at future options for a comprehensive plan uptown. So, I mean, there is possibilities that it could stay a parking lot, it could stay a parking deck, or it could be turned into another retail restaurant venture there. I mean, it's still, I think, an open book, and I feel it's important that the city does acquire this property, and I think it will benefit the city in the future, depending on, no matter what use it has. And, you know, I will support the legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Will the clerk please call the role in the emergency clause?
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
No.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Motion passes six yeas, one nae.
Any further discussion on the ordinance? Clerk, please call the role on the ordinance.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
No.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Ordinance seventy-seven dash thirteen passes six yeas, one nae.
Ordinance seventy-eight dash thirteen, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an option to purchase real estate agreement with the Medina Moose Lodge number six forty-seven, Lower Order of the Moose, for the properties commonly known as parcel numbers oh twenty-eight, nineteen-eight, twenty-one, two oh four, and oh twenty-eight, nineteen-eight, twenty-one, two oh five.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The emergency clause has been requested, and I moved to add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Any further discussion? This is the second part of the previous ordinance, seventy-seven dash thirteen. What this ordinance does, it enables the City of Medina to enter into an option agreement with the Moose for the acquisition of the building that's located on the corner of West Washington and Elmwood. This does not mean that we are going to purchase it, it just gives us the option to purchase it until December thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen. If we can find a viable use or for, a viable use for it, as Mr. Lamb was alluding to, maybe some other kind of use, whether it be retail use, restaurant use, or some type of use, this gives us the ability to control the destiny or the future of that parcel, together with a one-year extension beyond two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and sixteen. This option is costing us one dollar, and the purchase price of the property has yet to be determined. The purchase price of this property will be determined at such time as we decide to exercise the option, which two appraisals will be hired, two appraisers will be hired, and the average of both appraisals will be determined, to determine the purchase price. So this is to enable the City of Medina to view a future for the property, and hopefully through our Economic Development Department and our Community Development Department, some options will come available that we can actively pursue and use this parcel for something, whether it be residential, commercial, or otherwise, at this location. Is there any further discussion on, and again, I'd like to thank Mr. Huber for his tireless efforts in negotiating this for us. And I know Kimberly has more for you. Do you have anything else to add, Mr. Huber?
I was using your form, so...
Well, thanks. Any further discussion or comment?
No.
Will the clerk please call the role on the emergency clause?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Any further discussion on the ordinance? Clerk, please call the role in the ordinance.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Ordinance seventy-eight dash thirteen passes seven zero.
And the final ordinance of the eating ordinance, seventy-nine thirteen, an ordinance amending ordinance number sixty-nine ten, passed April twelfth, two thousand and ten, relative to the award of contract due to successful bidder for the two thousand and ten concrete street repair program.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Patton, do you want to address this one?
Thank you. This afternoon, the Board of Control approved a settlement for a final payment for our two thousand and ten concrete street repair project. As a result of that settlement, the final total exceeded what was originally authorized by council back in two thousand and ten. This ordinance will modify that dollar amount so that we can cover those costs.
Thank you. Any additional council comments? Mr. Huber?
An additional cost is an additional six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you. And again, thank you for your efforts in court on this item to come to a resolution. Any further comments? Clerk, please call the role in the ordinance.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Ordinance seventy-nine dash thirteen passes seven zero.
Council comments?
Mr. President.